Next is a motion to for business by consent.
Mr. President, I move the approved items of business by consent as presented and authorize the Board President or Superintendent to sign with the special project and personally contract for on behalf of the Board.
Your second. Any discussion? Ready vote? We now are ready for Superintendent's report.
All right, we are starting off with celebrating our awesome counselors in the room, and we have a couple of goodies for you as well. We'd like to ask Dr. Grimes to come forward and any members of Dr. Grimes' team, Ms. Bergdorf, Ms. Bergdorf and both Dr. Grimes. Dr. Grimes, the administrator for the alternative school, she also oversees counseling and a whole host of other things. In addition to that, her partners, both administrators, Mrs. Bergdorf as well as Ms. Bedoya in the audience, but Ms. Bergdorf is the one that helps her address counselors. And so, we will begin with our counselor proclamation, and so we'd like to ask for all of our counselors to stand and come and join us, please, and let's give them a thunderous applause. Counselors? We know we're not at the highlights points, but we certainly would think that it would be wonderful if we'll get a chance to get a picture with our counselors. I'm going to stand to the side as Dr. Grimes asks for one of our counselors to read the proclamation, and with that, also then they will share what items we have for them. Dr. Grimes, who would you like to read the proclamation?
Who you want to read?
All right, I'm Lori Adams. I'm their counselor at Randolph Elementary, and this is my first year.
I'm Deanne Stewart. I'm at Eisenhower. This is my first year of middle school, but I've been here twenty-three years.
My name's Mona Ridley. This is my second year at Winston Elementary, co-counselor with Mallory Jacobs, also at Winston Elementary, and I have been here for six years.
I'm Jean Ryan. I'm at French, and I've been here for seven years.
I'm Sandy Marshall, and I've been here for fourteen years at Scott Magnet.
I'm Megan Edmonds, and this is my first year at Scott.
I'm Janet Mitchell, and this is my twenty-third year at Robinson, and my twenty-fifth year with 501.
I'm Dana Owens. This is my fifth year at Highland Park High School.
I'm Mark Stratton, and I am at Landon Middle School. This is my second year in the district this time, and five years at the turn of the century, so.
Kevin Falk, I am in my fifteenth year all at Jardine Middle School.
Karen Presswood, this is my seventeenth year in the district and my fifteenth year at Lomond Hill.
Ms. Presswood, can we have the microphone back to our first-year counselor so she can start with the proclamation? How pumping is that? And do you have first few sentences and last few sentences?
We're at, you don't need to start, sorry. Whereas school counselors are employed in public and parade at schools to help students reach their full potential and
As far as you want to go.
And whereas school counselors are actively committed to helping students explore their abilities, strengths, interests, and talents, are these traits related to career awareness and development? And whereas school counselors help parents focus on ways to further the educational, personal, and social growth of their children.
Whereas school counselors work with teachers and other educators to help students explore their potential and set realistic goals for themselves, and whereas school counselors seek to identify and utilize community resources that can enhance and complement comprehensive school counseling programs and help students become productive members of society. And whereas comprehensive developmental school counseling programs are considered an integral part of the educational process that enables all students to achieve, succeed in school, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of Unified School District Number 501, Tepico, Kansas does proclaim that week of February 4th through the 8th, 2019 as National School Counselor Week.
I just want to firstly thank all the counselors. This is my first year in working with this group. I was a little intimidated, especially with the elementary, because I've never worked with elementary before, but other than the kiss-the-brain thing for Winston, it's been a great experience. I've learned a lot, and they are an amazing group of people. The things that they do with the kids and the families at every school, it's just a tremendous group. So, we do have some things here for you after the picture. We're going to take a picture with the Board, and then if you would, just kind of file by, and we have a couple of gifts here for you, so.
Thank you so much.
All right, four members are going to come on forward. If you don't, if you're in the audience and you aren't aware that we added counselors, so we have more counselors at the elementary, and just the level of trauma, social, emotional things, and suicidal, you could break it down, you do it in the basis. It is a privilege to serve you, and you do. So with that, four members can, we know it's not highlights, but counselors.
So, one of our first district resources, I want to talk about Sergeant Kelly Roberts. He took over when Officer Dickey decided to retire. This is an amazing guy. I don't know if you know Officer Roberts personally, but some things that he's changed here, just personality alone. He is a great one to talk with. He goes into the homes and really puts people at ease when he talks to them during his home visits. Very personable. He's got, he's a great conduit for 501 to the DA's office. He'll sit and he'll talk to the people as he hand-delivers affidavits to them, and has been just a tremendous asset. He's also stepped up the game, and he does a lot of research before he takes affidavit packets in to the DA's office. He looks to see, is there a history? Is there a pattern with this family? And so, he kind of highlights that, makes some notes, and I think that's been a positive for our affidavits to actually get filed because of the extra work that he's putting in. And I think all the counselors will say too, it's always available to do home visits for them. He's just been a tremendous asset. So, I just wanted to introduce him to you, and again, just tell you what a great asset he is for 501. The other resources, some of those you recognize, the automatic dialer, if a student misses just one class a day, parents are going to be notified of that. We send out pre-truancy letters three different times if a student is missing. The DA has provided a letter for us. We send a pre-truancy and a regular truancy letter. Home visits happen on all of our truancy cases, and we, principals will call parents in for truancy meetings. Metro passes, the same, we put the number up, about eighteen, fourteen total for this year. It's very similar to last year. Mr. Dick said, you know, give or take a hundred or so, but that's a very similar resource we just started. It's been also very effective. Each school has incentives and celebrations, and then another change for resources has been just figuring out where is the right fit. So when we call parents in and talk to them, this, your student's not coming, one of the reasons why. Here are some other opportunities we have in 501, whether that Hope Street is a great opportunity, the virtual school for a lot of our students who have high anxiety, and the JAG program has extended so that we have two JAG officers, JAG classrooms at each of our high schools so they can address some truancy needs. Communities and Schools is another resource, and in fact, they just presented at the Equity Council a couple of weeks ago about the great things they're doing, and attendance is one of those things that they focus on with their schools, offerings and case management. So it's been a great resource. One thing on here that you maybe used to seeing as the school liaison, that we used to send to the court system. That has changed when Judge Johnson retired. So that was during his tenure, he kind of changed the way the court docket looked. He had truancy cases completely separate, and so there would be a day just assigned for truancy, and it really allowed us to bring a school liaison in and talk to the courts about that. They have gone back to the old way of doing things where it's all sink cases, so neglect, child abuse, truancy, ungovernable, that's all in one docket. So a lot of those are confidential, and we cannot go into those sessions, so that's why we aren't doing the school liaison. But we have a very close connection with our court service officers. And in fact, another change is the juvenile corrections advisory board. You may have seen, Ms. Bedoya actually was selected by our mayor to be a voting member on the J-CAB, and that's where we meet with court service officers, the judge, the lawyers in the area, we have corrections, and anybody who works with juveniles, we meet once a month. So she's been a great asset to that as well, so we have a good connection with everybody who's working with truancy cases in Shawnee County. Second slide is really just about definitions. Again, compulsory attendance. The second one is the Kansas statute where it talks about child in need of care, DPS, unexcused absence for significant part of the day, that's in the Board policy. And the next slide actually can go into that policy if we want to go into that, there's a link there. But basically, that 3-5-7, which is our policy, is the significant part here. And I want to just remind you again, three consecutive days, five days of unexcused absence in a semester, and seven unexcused absence in a school year is where the truancy comes into play. So those are our numbers, 3-5-7, that's what we concentrate on. So if you looked at your packet and look at some of those graphs that are coming up, you notice fall, we have so many numbers that we file truancy on, but spring is really high, and you're like, why is spring so high? But remember, it takes us a while to get to that seven. So a student may be truant and have four unexcused absences first semester, they're not truant yet, unless those were consecutive, until they get to that seven. So that's why our second semester numbers are always going to be higher than our fall. If you look overall for a district, very low. The only significant number you may have seen there was Highland Park at twelve percent of their student population who were truant, and I will tell you, they've addressed that. They have, these are all last year's numbers. They have hired a person for their truancy now. Martin Lopez, he is tremendous. He is a great asset to Highland Park. He understands the community, he has students in his office all the time, he's out there talking to parents. He's bilingual, so he can speak the language to some of our parents who didn't, weren't able to communicate. So he's done great. I really expect to see Highland Park numbers to drop quite a bit after he's had time to work in that community. The last demographics I want to talk about, significant on this one, you notice that high school is your highest percentage of truant students that we have, and Hispanic. So we have almost half of our truancies that we file are high school, and a third of those are Hispanic. And again, going back to, like, Mr. Lopez is going to be addressing that Hispanic population at the high school level at Highland Park, and he's doing great numbers there. So those are kind of our target areas. What questions do you have about truancy? And again, these are from last year's numbers.
Given that we've kind of changed how we measure lateness to class, or whether kids are in class or not in class, how are we tracking that at the high school? I mean, you, you know, if you're missing half the class, where does that start? Is that being tracked? It's got to be confusing in the high school because how we have changed keeping track of that. So what are we doing there? To help us, again, I see these are kids who are, you're not getting there, they're there for a part of the class. We all know that if you're only there for a part of the class, and that seems to be a pattern, three or three times a week, it's the same thing, what, that we have somebody who is having some struggles. So I'm trying to figure out how we're zeroing in on those kids and trying to work with them.
So you answered that question, really, it's about tracking. Every student case is so different, and it's about learning that. When you start to see a pattern, those truancy officers pull them in, talk to them, why are you always late the first hour? Well, it's because I have to take three siblings to three different schools, and I'm always going to be late. My mom doesn't get home from the night shift until this time, I can't leave until she gets home to take care of the baby. So that's just one example. So understanding your population, the tracking part, when students come in and we log those, what time they came in, did the parent call, what's the reason, again, keeping track of all of that so we can start to see a pattern, and
How does that, how does that get tracked? I'm trying to, that's, just help me, walk me through, student shows up second hour, they weren't even there first hour, show up second hour, halfway through the hour. Are they going to the office to sign in to get permission to go back, or they just show up in the classroom? How does that?
So if they just show up, so that happens, that a student will just show up to class, if they send them back to the office for a pass, I know Tepico has is pretty strict with that, that they won't, can't come into class without a pass, that they come in halfway through. So then they can log exactly what time did they get there, and so that, again, Power School captures all of those things.
So somebody then is going through and checking those kinds of things in Power Schools? Each school's doing that?
Each, yes, each school has a different truancy officer, and so they approach that in their own style. Power School is still tracking, if you miss first hour every day, if you're tardy to second hour, that's telling us that you're getting to school second hour, but you're late getting there. So, again, and Power School is only going to be as good as that first hour and second hour teacher putting those records in. So it's not a hundred percent fix, but it gives us a really good idea.
So then who tracks that? You said that the truancy officers?
The truancy officers.
So they look at those things every day?
Yes, they run reports every day. And principals too, assistant principals and counselors pull those students in, communities and schools, JAG, all those people who are working in schools have that target population that they're watching.
But the one who is responsible, I'm just trying, I'm not trying to be obstructive, I'm trying to figure out, the truancy officer that pulls those, runs the rec, it's a printout every day, at the end of the day or the morning of the following day, of how many, what students were in attendance, who wasn't there, who didn't get to class until maybe third hour, they only were there for a half hour, or they were only there to two classes instead of all of their class, I mean, it's all, it gets crazy, I know. So somebody has to look at that and tally that up and look for those kinds of patterns. So if the truancy officers are doing that every day? In all of our high schools?
Yes, and our secretaries look at that too, because there are mistakes that we get corrected before a student goes home, because they'll get the automatic dialer, then the parent will get that information. So it's important for that record-keeping that we are checking that. So we have more than just one person who's checking it every day.
I'm just trying to think that ultimately, if you needed to know, or a principal really needed to know, they really kind of count on the truancy officer to be on top of these kids.
And if I may interject, as we have incorporated the data warehouse Tyler, the principal has access of chronic absenteeism truancy as well through that system, because it counts when the child comes in and when they leave. And so Tyler actually provides a report as well. So while they may get that as well from the truancy officers, secretaries can make corrections, the principal has access at any time based on the fact that when the information is entered into Power School, it's updated in Tyler automatically. So that level of data is
Collect, right. But the piece though is collecting the data and then being able to go back and get the data to show up the kids that are missing X number of classes a week, let's say, or coming in late three times a week, or five times a week, or they're missing, they're only showing up for a couple of classes, that somehow that data has to be in a usable form so you can spot those kids. That's, I guess that's what I
Right, and that's what Tyler does. I mean, it is Oh, absolutely. It prints the report by name, disaggregates it for you, I mean, it really is a click of a button of being able to print that off.
Yeah, because the really problem is, you look at that stuff when the child finally has a problem someplace and somebody looks at it, you know, they're not doing well in school until somebody look at it, but that pattern was growing all semester or all quarter long, so I mean, you like to know that somehow you have a mechanism for getting on top of that before it becomes a huge issue, and I, those are just the questions I have.
No, absolutely, and I think the principals, from the data consults to their daily checks, because they now have a daily check where the lead, you know, the principals come together, they look at attendance, they look at a variety of issues, and Tyler allows for that to happen. And then weekly, they have their checks as well. Of course, monthly, we have oversight on the central office and to meet with those administrators. I think the level of detail that we now have access to, and that's actionable, has been what's resulted in the improved truancy numbers, improving as it relates to the decrease in truancy and the improvement in attendance. So I just think that correlation is really because they are tracking it. There are several layers that are looking at that same information, so just one person isn't just looking at that information, there's several people who are doing that, so.
Thank you, I'm just
Dr. Mickelson?
I have a question about the automatic dialer. So I've occasionally received a call, six oh five usually from Tepico High School. It seems too late in the day for me to intervene, and I don't know if it's a setting in Power School, but if I got a notification, first hour of my child may or be absent, I may be able to intervene and get him to school for part of the day. And I don't know if that's an option, or is it just a setting on Power School that I haven't found yet, or, because after the day is done, it's too late for that day, right? So
It is automatic, it's six o'clock is when that rolls in, so that gives schools time to correct that that's incorrect. So I think that's why we have it set at six.
But if my child doesn't make it the first hour, and I get a call after he doesn't make it the first hour, I would make a call or go home or whatever and see, is he ill or is not at school, you know, why he's not at school for
Yeah, the setting of six o'clock was actually set up historically based upon the fact that offices need to verify their attendance, that the teachers have taken before that was available for the autodialer to make those calls. So that's why that information comes out of Power School at the end of the day, and those will be, as we improve our systems, we will improve the timeliness of that notification to parents, because ultimately, having all the stakeholders involved in getting our kids to classes is valuable.
That's the root of my question, is can we work towards that goal? So, and I don't know that I want to get six calls a day, but I don't know what else, what other options there are, but
And I believe Ms. Krueger, she wants to just take the microphone briefly to also mention from the communications and the work that they do in that regard.
There actually is a way to do that through your district Power School account.
Okay.
You can sign up so that your school notifies you when your child misses immediately when they're put in absent in the system.
Okay.
And then this would take place at six o'clock at night, but you would get an immediate notification, and so if you want that, you can just contact your school and they can adjust your Power School account.
Sometimes it's just I've forgotten to call them in, or things like that too, but yeah, so I will, I will explore Power School a little more thoroughly. Thank you.
Dr. McCarty?
I just wanted to hear a little bit about what the parent truancy meetings are like. Who's there? How do they go? What's your impression?
And again, based on, you know, personality of the administrators, usually the one who is calling that meeting, truancy officer, assistant principal usually, counselor or social worker, or if there's maybe a JAG teacher, or communities and schools, if they're working with them, that's who's usually present at the meeting. And then sometimes it's just parent and principal too. Sometimes they just sit and talk about what's the barriers to getting the student there. Really, it's about the help. What can we as a school district help you in order to get your student there?
Ms. Johnson?
And I'm glad to hear that, because that's what's my question, is is it collaborative process, or is that one that we have made some determination that we just need to let the parent know about and follow up from there? So I'm glad to hear that that is more collaborative, and they give the opportunity, are you saying they give opportunity to even
Absolutely, yes. And the other part of that is just some education too. A lot of parents don't understand that missing school does affect achievement, and so sometimes just educating them how important it is to be in school and what that will do if they have better attendance. So it's usually a very, like you said, a collaborative meeting so we can solve the problem together. And I appreciate that too. We know that we've partnered down through the years with several other community partners, and community schools is one of the ones that you mentioned earlier. So if those obstacles are there and the parents didn't realize we have this avenue to help them meet those needs, that's another good opportunity to inform. The only other thing I would ask for, once again, is historical data, so that we can know where we've been, and I know this is last year, but maybe those prior two years, is this what we have here? No? Okay. But just the historical, so we can see where we've come from, because we know we have implemented the two-day rule that, you know, we go to the home if the child hasn't been there for two days, just kind of seeing what the effects of that is on So that we just had up there was the average daily attendance. And so, the two slides at the end, Mr. Kip helped provide that ADA only because about four years ago, you all received that at every truancy report, so we just wanted to make sure that if you had a question regarding what ADA is, we just added that at the very end, after the very final slide, not knowing if you'd have a question about that. Your inquiry regarding her data in terms of years, because I don't know that that was answered, your truancy data that you just reported is from last year, correct? Correct, yeah. So that's last year's data, so that, you know, two absences without parent contact is the new piece that we put in place a couple of years ago, and we, you know, visit based on that, but truancy, of course, may just be, you know, you're an hour late to class, or you're constantly late. Truancy also, and chronic absenteeism, could be a student is, has a chronic illness and they're home for an extended period, and that also will then count against their attendance, and that's another area. So sometimes when you see elementary schools with those percentages, sometimes that's explained through that piece as well. I just wanted to tease that out. I don't know that that came up just yet.
So, two things that I think would help me, and that it's always important to know what changes we've made, how they've helped. And so, last year's truancy, or year before last, and maybe even a five-year truancy record would be kind of helpful so that we know that what we've instituted is helping. And then number two, you, that you talked about very briefly, you said, this is good compared to other districts, and maybe an example of a large district or a comparable district with their truancy ratings would be helpful for us to have knowledge. So just those two things, I think, in the report would be very helpful. Any other questions? Thank you, Dr. Grimes. So, we have a discussion item.
One of the items, as Mr. Kip comes forward, is regarding the implement weather dates in regards to the number of days we've taken in hours, so if you were wondering what, how many days have we taken, or the hours, and how many days do we have left currently, and do we need to make up days? At this time, we would like to suggest that should there be a need to make up days, which right now there is not a need, then we have that discussion at that time. But Mr. Kip, I'll turn it over to you to share kind of where we are at this point.
Yes, thank you. State statute
The state statute indicates that we need 1,116 hours of, that could be in direct instruction, conferences and in-service. 1116 is kind of the magical number for every district. Now that we've had six implement weather days, we are projected to have 1,022 hours. So still slightly above the bare minimum requirement, but yet if we did have another snow day, we would potentially...
Address that at that time.
Yeah.
And so we have really almost seven days really built in in terms of our calendar. So we certainly are well within the range of what we need. We add as often we add the action item on there, should there be action that you want to take to make some adjustments. But our recommendation at this time is that since we are within the timeframe that we need with the days that we've taken, that we continue with the path that we are on with trusting that Mother Nature is going to be good to us the rest of the year. However, should there be a need and we find that students cannot safely travel to school, we will address that and be well prepared to do that as well at that time. So we are still within the hours and still have some space there as well for added movement. And if the board does not want to take any action, then we don't have anything else to present at this time.
Ms. Kirk.
One of the things I, I guess I get a little anxious when we say we've got that built into the calendar. These were the, we have built in extra days because we thought our kids needed more time in front of teachers. And it sounds like we've built in full snow days. And I want us to make sure that we're not saying that there are snow days built into our calendar.
That's right. Thank you for that.
That drives me crazy, but telling people all along, there are no snow days and nobody believes me now. But I, I think it's important that what we've lost are educational days for kids. We've lost what, six days already? Because we had more than is required, because we believed and worked very hard to get ourselves up to a higher level of opportunities for kids in the classroom. So these are not built-in snow days and I want no one to leave here thinking that there are snow days in our calendar.
Yeah, in fact, those six additional instructional days we've had for years, there's been no reason to reduce those for any reason. They just happen to be an extra buffer in case Mother Nature decides something else.
Thank you, Mr. Kip.
Any other questions? It's a board field, no need for action at this time.
Okay. Thank you.
So ready for board member comments? Start down there with Reverend Williams. Dr. Mickelson?
Just briefly, I'd encourage us to take Mr. Fleming's comments to heart and figure out a way to incorporate instruction on Ms. Todd and her accomplishments and impact on the Brown v. Board decision incorporated into our curriculum somehow. One of the highlights of my tenure here on the board has been the chance I had to take a picture with one of the original plaintiffs the night that the first lady came and spoke. And so I still have it on my phone and that's still a tracer of mine. But if we could incorporate Ms. Todd's accomplishments and her contribution in curriculum, that would be great.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes, and thank you for everything you've presented on tonight. And I'm just, I just want to quickly highlight that we have been doing the human sexuality parent meetings and we've had a lot of issues with the weather and just trying to get those out to the public. But I would like to share with the board and maybe at a future time, the, the input and feedback that we received at the other two meetings. I know at the one meeting was Dr. Mickelson and I, I mean Morrison and I, sorry. And then last night, me, Dr. McCarthy and Dr. Morrison attended at the Topeka West meeting. But there were some questions regarding communication, how we really get a better bead on how to get information out and definitely with the weather situation, how a lot of people came, didn't know that it had been canceled because they just had already had it on their calendars. And when they got there, other events weren't taking place, but the, this particular event that was supposed to be to engage and inform parents was not there. And so I think we're still grappling for how do we best communicate with our constituency? I think we talk a lot about community news, but I'm not sure all the regular parents, you know, read that on a regular basis. I know I have a couple of newsletters that I get, I read the headlines. If the headlines don't seem to, to bring me into that, it goes in my trash can. I don't know what people's relationship with that are, is, but I think that's something else we're still exploring. What is it that each of our, whether it's our staff members or our parents or even our patrons, what is it that they look, look at to find out what the agenda of this district is? Because that's what we need them to engage around and we need them to feel like they're being informed and not, not like they're just chasing down information. And so those are the concerns, some of the concerns I heard, but I want to, at a future board meeting, maybe share the specific comments that we heard regarding that particular, well, curriculums.
I attended the Let's Help Parent meeting at Topeka West High School. I thought it went extremely well. I was very pleased with giving parents the opportunity to come and, and see what's being taught and to ask questions. I also thought Mrs. Wallace did an excellent job in kind of facilitating that meeting. Very robust discussion and tried to get lots of varying viewpoints and I appreciate that. I was very impressed with the presenter, I have great confidence in her organization and her ability to teach the curriculum. And I think some of the recommendations that had come forward to us from DCAC, which is our parent and community advisory committee, were that they wanted our, our sex ed curriculum to be taught in a consistent way, in a way that students could hear and be engaged with. They had a number of recommendations, including paying attention to the national standards, which this curriculum does. And I'm, I'm just very pleased with our response to those recommendations that were brought forward from, from DCAC and based on the parent survey that they conducted at the time too. So thanks to all DCAC members as well and thank you district and administration for responding to people's concerns and putting that together. Thank you.
Ms. Kirk.
I just also want to echo the public comment we had this morning about our, our failure to give kind of recognition to our local heroes in, in this whole struggle over the years. And we forget, we look at national people and forget that so much of this was, was much smaller in its, in its beginnings and people made huge contributions and well enough time has gone by that there aren't many people who actually remember those particular individuals anymore. And so I think we, we need to, to do that. I mean, it just, it struck me when he started talking about how we forget, how quickly we forget those people who had such an impact when all of this was happening. So I really appreciate his coming forward.
The only thing I want to comment on, the thing that I got out of the parent meetings was the difficulty in communication. And Dr. Mickelson and I have been talking about this since we were in side council at Topeka High. It's just very difficult to communicate with all the constituents, the parents. So, and I don't know, maybe it's already done, but at enrollment, a question about how best to communicate about your child would be in order and I probably already do that, but that, that would certainly, you know, whether it be texting or Facebook or whatever it is online. And the other thing that came out of that meeting was if you're going to have an opt-out part of that, perhaps discussing that at enrollment. That was, and I know that wasn't available this year because we didn't know what, what was going on. But having, you know, having that and, and I know a lot of the enrollment is now online, but it can be with the enrollment packet some way and pointed out that way. So those are the two things. I appreciate the parents and their viewpoints, but I also think this is a wonderful program. So kudos to, to Ms. Wallace and administration for bringing this forward and finding somebody who feels comfortable to teach, because I, I do know that some of the physical education teachers weren't comfortable with this teaching. And that's being comfortable in teaching to our children is, is one way we can, we can get this across, so. So any other comments at this point? I think we're going to recess to executive session for a short time.
Mr. President, I move the board recess to executive session to discuss potential litigation with our legal counsel pursuant to attorney-client privilege exception under coma and to discuss individual employee contracts and performance pursuant to non-elected personnel exception under coma and the open meeting, oh, I'm leaving the wrong one, I'm sorry. Okay. Yes, Mr. President, that was the one I, I said, well, I got to the six thirty thing. I thought, wait a minute, we just did that one. I move the board recess to executive session to discuss potential litigation with our legal counsel pursuant to attorney-client privilege exception under coma and the open meeting will resume. We think it'll take about 15 minutes and knowing what we're like, I think it'll probably take at least 20. So I'm going to say seven forty-five.
Okay, is there a sec? Okay, any discussion? Read about.
Votes now open? All votes are in, motion carries unanimously. And we will adjourn.